Thank you, Lisa. The next budget is due process. And this is the public defenders prosecution and domestic violence. For 2021, we have a decrease amount of $29,300. And that's based on what we have used to date. Any questions on that? I like this. The next one is the supervisor's budget, which is 171. It's on page 15. And the biggest change in this is healthcare. And it's due to a long time employee will be retiring. And they currently do not receive healthcare. So whoever is hired, depending if they're going to take out, do a buyout or take the healthcare, we don't know. So we budgeted for the healthcare in this budget. I don't see any hands raised. This is so odd. All right, we're gonna go through.
Yes, there's a hand raised in the attendance. Joanne McCollum.
Oh, thank you. Ms. McCollum?
Yes, I wanted to ask Supervisor Stumble, the domestic violence, you said the account, it wasn't as much as before. Yet we've had an increase in domestic violence because of the COVID. So I was wondering, how is that used? Sorry, it was one or two before.
That's okay, I can find it, no problem. So in this budget, Joanne, we took, when we printed this off, it was as of 8/31. So a lot of the domestic violence prosecution are also because of Zoom. And there's a lot of unknowns. But we were at like 50%, almost 50% in domestic. But we're a little under. No, no, we're higher than that. We budgeted 189 and we're at 103. So when we come to the final budget, then it could be adjusted. But Joanne, also domestic violence, if it's second offense, then that goes to the county prosecutor.
Oh, okay.
So this is for person. Mr. Winner?
Okay, thanks.
Did I answer that correctly?
Yeah, you did. Thank you.
Next is the accounting department. So the only increase in here that's new, and after speaking with clerk Rowe, we are recommending that we pay a $3,000 increase to our accounting director because she also does our grant follow-up and filings. And in the past, Jeff Allen used to do it. But now Joanne has taken on that responsibility. But that's, any questions on that one? There's not a lot of big changes. And we're just pointing out the changes that we do have.
I just had one change or one question. Yeah, Joanna, I know it's probably not in your budget and stuff, but the cost for to move the accounting department to using Laserfish, is that something that Travis is budgeting? Are we just going to amend the budget? Or is that going to happen this year? I didn't know where we were at.
Well, we're trying to actually go ahead and do the Laserfish for the accounting department this year.
Okay, great.
Meetings with them. And we do have it budgeted for this year.
All right, great, great news.
Trying to get it established.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Good question. Any other comments or questions on that? Independent audit. There's a $1,000 increase and this was contractual. Other than that, that's the only change. There's no big changes in assessing at all. Are there any questions on the assessing department? All right. Legal services. It was decreased by $15,000. Any questions or comments on that? Township clerk. The biggest change is the maintenance contract on the five scanners that were purchased five years ago. So we have $75,000 budgeted in to pay that out of this budget. So other than that, they also last year, which is this year, there's been several elections. There is no election budgeted, but we need to budget one.
Yeah, I was going to ask if you want me to put those numbers together before we do the final budget? Or you want to wait until next year?
No, we need to. I think it would be best to put it in there.
Okay, we can do that.
Okay, with the board, just.
Yeah, and a special election is around, probably around $45,000, somewhere between 40 and 50. But we'll pull those numbers together. And the only other thing I wanted to say, we didn't put it in the budget. But and maybe it's just something we could do in the future. I think next year, of course, it's going to be up to the new clerk. But one of the things that we've investigated is to do a software purchase that would, like most of, especially your larger municipalities, have it for agenda management and meetings. And it's really cool because one thing it does is records the votes. And then the trustees and everybody interacts with that during the meeting. And just is makes a really good flow. And for a smaller price, you can also add video recording to it. So you know, if the board wants to move into, that was the easy way to do it. You could do that as part of that software package. And so that's one thing that wasn't in there. We didn't put that in there. And it would probably, I know in the past, like when we went to Laserfish, we just did a budget amendments. But I just wanted to put that on the radar. I know that Lisa and I, you know, spent a lot of work and time and research. And just with this year being election year. And plus doing Laserfish, we wanted to move into both, but it just wasn't possible for us to do both the new kind of processes this year.
Yeah, all new, bring it back as an amendment. We didn't budget really any capital or large expenditures or anything like that. But we can bring it back and look at it. You have shared that information with me. And it looks, it looks like the right thing to do. But we just didn't have it in this budget. And you can bring it back.
Yeah, be up to the new clerk and Lisa, probably working together with you and staying to get a buy-in to, you know, if you guys understand it. And then if you guys agree, then we could, Heather and Lisa could bring that to the board. So just wanted to mention that because it is a great technology. We went and visited Ann Arbor. They use it. There's several different software companies. But we looked at two, we narrowed it down to either Munich Code or Granicus. I think there's only one of them. I can't remember which one. That could do the video thing for an extra charge. But one of the things I do want to mention is that Ann Arbor had the video and paid us several thousand dollars a year. I want to say like maybe 3,000 to get the video. And they had it for years. And nobody actually logged in to use their video and stuff. So they stopped using it. So I mean, it was interesting, especially in Ann Arbor, where people are really more participatory, I think, than in our community. But we'll see. Thank you. That's all I had, pretty straightforward budget. And we'll work on, Lisa and I will work on putting together the special election budget that you could add and change before the end of the, before you have to go back out.
Thank you. The next is human resources. The time when we did the budget, the only thing we took out and we decrease is the vacant additional HR position because we're just trying to balance the budget. So any of the vacant positions, we did not fund in the draft budget. But we can always bring it back. A lot of things, you know, might change. Especially state shared revenue, based on what I'm hearing. And then our, something we learned today, which is great news, our healthcare, which was budgeted at 18% increase, actually came in at a half a percent decrease from 2020. And yeah, they think it's because people were not going to the doctors or to the hospital because of COVID. So our usage was substantially down. But that will be a positive change in, from the draft to the next budget. Any question on HR, human resources?
So Brenda, if I understood you right, so instead of 18% increase, you'll do a 17 point, 17 and a half.
It'll be a point, no, it's actually going to be decreased in expenditures for healthcare by a half a percent.
Did you estimate, oh, so it'll be instead of the 18%, it'll be a half a percent lower than this year?
Yes.
Oh, that's even better news than what I understood. Great.
Yeah. And we just found that out yesterday. So that's my draft. Order review. There's no real changes there. There's no, the rates, it's actually going to be lower because there's a newer employee that was hired when someone retired. Any questions on the treasury budget? Next is building operations. We have only one in permanent wages. We have a slight increase because of six month and one year step increase. And the new coverages for the new employee who, after someone retired, we do have, we made a job offer to someone. And if Karen's on here, she can talk to it. But, and he's supposed to start the first weekend October. Mr. Hoffmeister, is that right? Yes. Are there any questions on the building operation? Hoffmeister, do you have anything to add?
No.
All right. Brenda, do you want me to speak to the new, to the offer or no?
Yes. Sure.
Okay. All right. Interviews were held and actually even second interviews were held. And I have made an offer to a gentleman by the name of Raymond Bryce, And it looks like he will have a start date of October 5th. Yes, October 5th. Everything's coming back good on him. So we have a start date of October 5th. What will his salary be? It is $60,705.
And that's in the 2021 budget, Karen.
Thank you.
All right, computer support is next. The only thing that happened from the draft budget to this budget is we need to, website redesign has to be budgeted. We're going out for that now, but we don't know. We're pretty sure it'll have to occur next year. And the cybersecurity that we approved, that is not budgeted in the draft budget. So we'll be amending the budget to include those two items. That'll be in professional services, 801. Moving on to general services. We had amended the budget and put COVID supplies here. And that was, it's down 60,000 from what it was this year.
Just for people's information, we're getting a lot of stuff from the state for this November election. And we have so much stuff. I think Mike's already packed our kits for the election for all, and including the, you know, doubling the size of the AV count board. So that's, you may be able to even have that be less because we got that to use for the election. But it's, you know, we're not necessarily going to need it on. So you'll be, we'll be able to just put that in our stock of supplies to be able to use. That's great.
That is good. So we spent in 2020, 60,000 to get us up and running. And all the changes that were done, not only for our employees, but for the guests and the public was 60,000. And next year it's 5,000. And the postage, we decreased from 90,000 to 65,000. And that was due to an election. Any question on GF, general fund? I mean, general services?
Brenda, this is Joanna. I did a comment on the COVID supplies. I did file a FEMA grant. I believe the amount is a little bit over $27,000. And if we were approved, we get 75% of that back. So that's, that's part of those supplies. And the reason being, the 27,000, we couldn't do any of the plastic shields, like the Zoom we had to have. So there was things I couldn't put on there. But, but the supplies themselves were about 27,000. So hopefully we, we get approved and get some back for that, those supplies.
We also received additional funds, didn't we, this year, Joanna?
Or?
PPEs?
We have not received anything yet.
Oh, I thought we got 135,000.
That, that was a, yeah, that was actually in lieu of a part of the CVTRS for revenue sharing. They did not pay us the one for August. So they, they held that, the state did, because they needed that. And we were given 135,000. But that basically is not for PPE. That, we have to use that for the fire, you know, our first responders. So that really doesn't go to the general fund. That goes to fires. And you know, my recommendation on those, since we've been running as usual, is to apply some of those funds that we're getting into their either pension or their OPAP, which, you know, is, you know, very underfunded at the time. So I'll bring that back to the board as a, as a suggestion.
All righty. And the planning, the salary supervision, there was just a wage adjustment or the, for tan, is that, it's the assistant to the planning department? Karen, we also have a resignation of the planning coordinator. So Jason is working to get the job description and everything reviewed in it so that we can go back out to fill the position due to the resignation of Charlotte Wilson.
That is correct. And we're also looking at the wage of that position. Jason has got some information, done some research, and come back with a wage range that would be a decrease from what we are currently paying.
And then it'll come back to the board?
Yeah, well, yeah, well, that's a Teamster position.
Will be, are you saying it's going to be a new job description? Because that would come back to the board, right?
It's an updated job description. The changes are basically that when the job was filled in 2017, it reported directly to the OCS director. We did not have a planning director. And so now we have a planning director. So that planning coordinator would, you know, would report directly to the planning director, not the OCS director. I can send out the job description to the board if they want to see, you know, the other changes. But they were, it was not, not a lot of changes to the job description, just some cleaning up.
Thank you, Karen Wallen.
I had a question.
Buckwell?
Just, I know that we had an economic development person in the past. I don't know, is that in this budget or would that be somewhere else? I know I saw it somewhere.
It's in the general fund budget. But vacant, and all vacant positions were not funded in the 2021.
I just, I don't, you know, I know this for discussion. And I just want to put my two cents in for, I think that that's a position, especially in view of, I think that we always needed it, but, and which I think most of us agreed, and you got to make choices. But I think it really needs to be a priority in 2021. You all know, as you drive around the township, there are so many empty storefronts. And I just think that, you know, trying to recruit businesses or find grants to help businesses, or I just think it's really important. And I know that the rest of staff is pretty overall, you know, I don't see anybody carving out room in their daily operations to actually focus on attracting, you know, new businesses. So I would really, even if we just, you know, did it part-time, you know, there was someone who wanted to work part-time on it. I just think it's really important with the loss of businesses throughout the community. With so many, you know, some of the malls that have, you know, different businesses, and they're just, they've closed down. And then I just heard another new business that was going to close, or a business is going to close today. So I think it's really important. I know times are bad, but I think that's the time when we need to probably step up our recruitment efforts in terms of getting new businesses in the community.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay. I hope you don't hear an echo. If you do, I am so sorry about that. I'm at a different location than my own. So I would look at that position in a different light. We spent a pretty good sum of money trying to do an economic development plan. And that was supposed to be for the future of Slane Township. Of course, nobody predicted coronavirus coming. And some say November, some say February, either way. So no one predicted that. I believe that the communities that will come out of the effects and impacts economically of coronavirus will be the ones that are already doing planning during, during it, during the period of the pandemic itself. I would also say that if this is something that the board, the future board, because I will not be here. But if the future board decides to take this up, not only bring in a director, even if that director is part-time, but also bring in an assistant, even if that assistant is part-time. And so that way, as the effects of the pandemic lessen and more direct recruitment can be done in order to have businesses come into Slane Township, maybe one or both of those positions could be moved to a full-time basis. Again, of course, this is going to be an action for a future board, even though if I have a correct supervisor, Stumble, you said since the position is vacant, it is no longer allocated inside of the 2021 budget. Did I have that correct? But, okay, sorry. Okay. But I would, I guess, basically give a hint of caution that the areas that are going to be able to come out of the effects of this pandemic first are the ones who are already planning for the future instead of getting out of the pandemic and then doing planning. And critical to that is an economic development director, even on a part-time basis, and an assistant. So that is my comment.
Madam Chair?
Yes, trustee Wilson?
Hi, yeah, I just wanted to kind of piggyback on the last two comments that I think we should take a serious look at, possibly like the last two comments, maybe a part-time economic development director position. We definitely need someone who is actively pursuing more development in the township. But I understand that a lot of uncertainties, we may not be able to have a full-time, but we should probably take a look at, at least a deeper conversation, maybe later in the year with a part-time position. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the comments. And we're taking all the comments in. And if, maybe we can contract for services for that as a, there's a few options. Now that we have our healthcare numbers in, that's going to help us. For Team B Court is still under COVID. And their revenue is starting to climb though, so it's doing better. And state shared revenue looks like it's going to be better than what we thought it was. So the budget that we brought forward was just based on the conditions at the time. You know, so as we come out of stuff and numbers change, we can absolutely look at adding things back in.
Supervisor Stumble?
Yes.
I just, I, you know, in my statements, I agree wholeheartedly with what, you know, Monica generally said. But specifically when Monica talked about the planning, we spent a lot of time and money, you know, doing those plans. And with the idea that, you know, there was priority set, you know, goal number one, two, and three, and four. And I know those have to be reevaluated based on where we're at with COVID. But I do know in particular, you know, the one study was done on Michigan Ave and that whole kind of Michigan Ave, Ford Boulevard, for all of our residents, that frequent businesses that are all, one of the things that came out of the plan, I remember, was that they're all driving out of town. And I think it's going to take someone with special expertise. As you know, you know, it's because of you running into somebody about getting Kroger's here. Otherwise, you had not had that personal contact. That Kroger, when they ran their numbers, showed that we couldn't support, you know, a grocery store. And I think that same thing was true when they did the studies. You know, people are driving all the way to Canton to get a coffee or to the north or the south side, or even to Carpenter Road, residents that live, you know, on the, on the north and northeast side to get a lot of their daily needs met. And I think it's going to take someone to say, look, we know that here's the income levels. But at the same time, studies could be done, or they can look at what people's purchasing powers are and what they're actually spending dollars on to make those efforts to attract them to. I mean, nothing would be better than to get, you know, Starbucks on East Michigan. I think people from the north, south side would go over there. People from Canton would come. And all of our residents who are now driving outside to do that. So I think that there's, especially with a lot of the zoning stuff that we're doing and the changes, I think that a lot of those pieces of property, and if we could just get one, it's, I think it's kind of like the Krogers. If we could land, you know, a franchise business, whether it's, you know, Chick-fil-A or Panera Bread or Starbucks, I think that once one of those came and it would show that they could, and I, I know that they'll be successful. Then that, then that could breed like more retail. And then especially the whole issue with, you know, food on that side of town too, to be able to land something in that empty storefronts that we have that provide alternatives to food, like Aldi, I think would be great. And now we have to go to Belleville, or we got to go to Ann Arbor. But I, you know, or, so I think an Aldi that would actually be in our community over on that northeast side would just be, and I know it would be successful. We just have to put our numbers together, just like you did with Kroger's, and show them that this is, this is an area that, you know, people would go to. Us from the south side would drive over to Michigan Ave to go to Aldi's because people are going to, we're going to Belleville and we're going to Carpenter that are farther away now. And we'd definitely go to our own community that's closer.
Okay. Like I said, this was just prepared with a lot of different numbers. And now we're getting better numbers coming in. And I feel a lot better about it. Personally, I would like to have economic development to assist the small businesses that we have as well. And connecting employers with, with residents would be a good tool to have. We got. We also need a marketing, I mean, there's lots of things we would all like to have, but just to market our township would help a lot as well. So with the numbers coming in, I mean, we can definitely look at adding it back in part-time. Or we just got the numbers yesterday. So once we run the new numbers, we'll know. So I, I'm really excited about the fact that our healthcare came in under than what we budgeted this year. It's, that's a huge blessing. All right.
Madam Chair?
Pardon me?
I had one comment, it's okay?
Yes.
Following up on the comment about the retention of existing businesses, I think that's probably sometimes not put in the front and center enough. I think Director Ranzick and probably Jason also could attest that we have a number of existing businesses. We sometimes feel a little bit kind of, I think, I don't want to say slighted, but when you have site plans that, where the parking lots are not up to speed and where people have to sometimes avoid certain potholes in the parking lots and things of that nature, I think it's important that as much as you try and attract new businesses, that the ones that are currently existing that have been here for many decades, in some cases, that have always paid their taxes and participated in the community and supported the community, that we also endeavor to make sure that our site plans are enforced. We spend an awful lot of time, in fact, we're in court right now, enforcing the site plan for the, for the Paint Creek, Paint Cross Shopping Center. The township got complaints all the time from people about how those, the trash behind was not being picked up, as well as the fact that wasn't even the right number of dumpsters or nor were they gated per the site plan. So I just want to just follow up on that component about the retention of businesses. Sometimes what's new and shiny is great, but what you've had for all these years, somehow they need to be a part of that conversation because a lot of people, I know Mike, again, Mike and Jason hear it all the time as I do, they just want to see the shopping centers. Probably Crunch Fitness is a good example. We at least got that parking lot addressed over there when they came in over there. So there's a lot of things that can be done, I think, for the retention while you're also looking for trying to attract new businesses. I mean, one is not, they're not mutually exclusive. I think one leads to the other, but I think that needs to be highlighted.
Madam Chair? Hi. Okay, sorry, I'm hoping I'm not getting the echo. If I do, I am so sorry. Just the last point I would like to make and then I will move on. One thing that the economic development director, if that, if that position is re-added or re-added with a, you know, assistant or whatever by the future board, can look at is the changing face of retail. That is a factor that probably will go forward even post-COVID is that the traditional brick and mortar retail that individuals have been used to may change. With, with that, you're going to have a lot of possible open lease space or even open building space and trying to look at ways to convert some of those buildings into, I guess you could say, 21st century use that's outside of retail. Maybe even small hubs that people can build or start a small business with in, as in like, like desks, cubicles they begin, similar to Sparks have downtown with their incubator. So I just wanted to put that out there too, because some of the things that we see, especially as it relates to smaller businesses and, and the changes with COVID is because of the change in face of retail. And a lot of things are unfortunately going online, unfortunately. And it's probably going to be that way for a while. So just wanted to put that comment out there.
Thank you, Monica. All right. The Planning Commission in zoning, which is building budget 414, there's a slight reduction due to the number of meetings that have been held in 774 Ford's Parks and Grounds. The seasonal for Ford Lake Park was reduced $20,000. Now highways and streets wasn't a big change. And I heard, what, what I heard everyone say is they want to restore economic development position in 728. So once we run the, I normally, historically, we don't ever use fund balance for operations. And maybe with all the changes that we're getting, it might come out to be okay, you know? So right now, we're $35,000 to the good. But we haven't changed the healthcare numbers. And once we put everything in, what I heard the board say is to restore that position for economic development. So I can run the budget numbers with that in. Does that sound, did I capture what you guys were saying? Everyone in agreement?
Yes, I would say yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, very good, clear. Highways and streets and drain costs, those are costs that we have every year. We budgeted $50,000 from $100,000 for highway, street and road construction, but that usually comes back to the board. The drains are fixed at 326. And the lift stations are the only things budgeted out of this cost center. Any questions on that? So any capital or large projects will come back as a budget amendment. Economic development is, we discussed that at length. I will see about restoring that. And hopefully, we don't have to come out of fund balance to do that. We can look at contracting for services versus having our own department as well. But we, we think it's better to have someone here if we could. I'm not sure how much that would cost. Any questions on parks and grounds? There's not a lot of big changes, you guys. We have Stormwater Management, there's some big changes there. So you're under the Watershed Council. And OHM does our permitting process through them. So there's no change. Am I going too fast? Is everything okay?
Oh, you're fine.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I can, I just wanted to make sure I give a, a shout out to our Parks and Grounds crew, who have done an amazing job, especially during the current situations that we have been in as a community, maintaining our parks and making them look great for people to enjoy as an activity, especially during the initial days of the coronavirus, which was one of the few activities people could do. So I just wanted to make sure I put that on the record. I think they have done an amazing job maintaining and making our parks look well for folks to enjoy them.
You're right, Monica, very good job this year. And community stabilization, friendships? Any changes there? Now, community stabilization, we, what we did is we did, we decreased public nuisance legal by $50,000, mowing by $55,000. We had budgeted Coors Road investments at $45,000. We really didn't use that at all this year. So if we want to do something for the corridors, we can bring it back. And we decreased 969001, which is the community investment. We decreased that by $25,000. Land bank went from 50 to 25. We've not utilized that at all. We still, we booked budgets $60,000 for community engagement. By Habitat for Humanity, they do an excellent job for us. An excellent job in working in neighborhoods and connecting people to resources and really developing plans and engagement by each of our communities. They're in Sugarbrook right now. They've been in West Willow, Goff Village, and they're currently in Sugarbrook. So they also, that position coordinates mailings for grants that are available for people to have furnished checks and improvements to their homes at very low, if not free, interest. So I did re-budget for that. I find, hopefully everyone agrees it's okay to continue with that.
Madam Chair, yes?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then other functions on streetlights. For non-accessible, Clerk Row had sent out an email to everyone. And we did make changes, they're just not in the draft budget. We did passport changes and we did remove economic development, but we can add that back in. Highways and streets, we changed a narrative that was incorrect. Parks and grounds, the position will not be filled at this time. And then under other functions, we increased the street lighting not accessible to 175,000. So we took comments in that Clerk Row had given and other people and we're just making the changes from the draft budget. Other functions, that was the street lighting, that was the biggest change there. And the money that was transferred to Hydro from DTE that the town, so the township, it's actually general fund dollars that were set aside and put into capital improvement. We made lots of capital improvement to the Hydro station. And last year, we transferred because most of the expiration of that DTE contract. So they're starting to pay us back out of the fund that was set aside. And this year, we didn't transfer it to Hydro because they didn't need it. We transferred to the general fund because the general fund needed it. So that was a change from last year to this year.
But did we put that like in operations or capital? Or is it, or you just put it in there and used it in different places?
Revenue. It was put in as revenue to the general fund instead of being transferred to Hydro.
I was just thinking, you know, I don't want to make major adjustments to what you put together, but maybe in the future, if you continue that and stuff, because that's something that, you know, may fluctuate or go up and down. And instead of using operations, you use that for capital. So then it's like sets aside a capital, whether you want to use it on roads or park stuff, or it's just, just an idea. I know that you, you were facing a different story at the time when you put it together, if you use it in operations, but just an idea to think about for the future.
Okay, thank you. Capital outlay. Capital outlays budget will be brought back to the board. And Matt, the biggest, there's a transfer of $396,756 to the court. So that's the one that kind of has thrown us off. But the court's not had to do that large of expenditure or transfer of funds. But COVID-19 has just turned everyone upside down. Things are not the same. So as a, the draft budget, that's what we had going in there. The closer we get to, you know, November, October, November even, it will have better numbers on that for the general fund and wouldn't have to transfer out as much, depending on where they're at right now. That is basically it. So the estimated revenues is $8,919,666. The expenditures or appropriations is $8,887.39, which a net to the positive is $32,627. So that was for the draft budget. Now we have better numbers and with the direction from the board to restore the economic development position, that'll change the numbers. But as we, as soon as we get the changes, we'll let you guys know and move on to the other funds at another work session. Any other questions or comments? I do want to thank Debbie Graham, the deputy supervisor. This was her first budget and she did an excellent job.
Thank you, Debbie.
All right. Debbie's here, but she doesn't want to be on the Zoom.
Thank you.
Do you guys, would you like to go through the budget? Or we have, I'm sorry, we have a second item on the work session, which is, they were in the board packet. It's Monica Ross Williams had asked to put on a conflict of interest and ethics policy. Are we ready to move into those work session agendas? Everyone okay with that?
Yes.
All right. Monica, you're up.
Thank you. So I wanted to put these two policies before the board. I just want to make it clear that these are proposed policies. It would be great if this could be passed by this current board. But in the same aspect, it is also looking to have a movement, moving target, if need be, for the future board that will be upcoming to pass these policies. First things first, let's look at the conflicts of interest. To wrap it all up in a nice neat barrel, there has been a many residents that have came to me, and I know they have also came to other board members, axing. Is this, is this, do we have this as a board? Do we have something that directly relates to the conflicts of interest outside of just basically a monetary gain? So how would a board member actually align and also notify other board members if they perceived that it was a conflict of interest on their behalf? I think that if you look at the proposed policy, it, it talks about many things, including basically also keeping informed of governmental issues and doing that by going into and attending, as you can, Michigan Township Associations, Michigan Municipal Leads. But it also talks about being avert to any position of conflicts of interest and retained from using a board position for personal, familiar, or partisan gain. I know I had a question in regards to what was partisan. Partisan does not mean a traditional sense of partisan as, you know, political parties. Partisan is basically for a singular individual, basically to use their board position for gain, right, in a partisan manner to themselves. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear for any other board members that may have that question because I can understand like partisan, what does that mean? In other, other parts of the conflict of interest party, proposed board policy, also talks about basically, of course, encouraging the free expression of opinions of all board members and keeping systematic communications between a board and community. I also wanted to kind of put, before I even jump into the ethics aspect of this, is that as township trustees, when we're serving in our fiduciary positions, we serve in these positions. as township trustees, while we're serving in our fiduciary positions, we serve in these positions for the people of the township. We happen to be obviously beacons of their voices and their ideas. Particularly, we don't serve in this, these positions for ourselves and our own personal interests. So that should easily make it very clear that if you have any conflict of interest, you would want to make sure that that's disclosed for the people of the Ypsilanti Township. I want to flip into the ethics policy because I think this is also important. And I know I've had, again, many, many individuals within our township and even some outside that have asked, do the Ypsilanti Township Board of Trustees have anything relating to a policy on ethics? And the question always has the answer of no. And I, I, I believe that as representatives of this community, which has over or up to maybe fifty-seven thousand individuals that live within it, that we as board members and also future board members should be able to maintain a ethical standard as it relates to our trustee and fiduciary responsibilities. Now, I know I had a question on this in regards to legal authority. So what exactly does that mean, right? So what that means is that as individual trustees and fiduciaries, no individual trustee or fiduciary has a legal authority on their own, right? The only authority, in fact, that's why we employ a, a attorney counsel for the board to ensure that if we have any questions, those questions go to legal counsel as it relates to legality of things. But when we do come together as, as a complete board, that complete board does have legal authority to do things like to make policy, also basically to instill policy as it relates to laws that would be enforced for Ypsilanti Township. So I just wanted to give a little bit more clarification of what that meant about no legal authority. The ethics policy also talks about disparity or harmony in cooperation. I want to make sure that that's clear. Board members have, have all rights to disagree on different aspects of how it is that the, you know, they may have on a policy. But in the same aspect, during vigorous points of debate on issue, that disagreement should at least keep itself in a professional manner. I will, I would go as far to say in a professional manner, not only inside of the board meetings, but also inside of the community. So that's, that's, I just wanted to put a little fine point on that one. And then a last, last part, I think is pretty self-explanatory, is that, again, as it relates to ethics, our, our job is our devotion to public service. The public that we are serving is a community. And it is basically the preparation of our representative democracy as trustees on this board and as how we serve the people of Ypsilanti Township. It is my hope that the, either this board or future board will look at, even if they would like to add, or hopefully not delete too much, but add things to these ethics and also conflicts of interest policies, that, that it will be adopted. I believe that based on my discussions with individuals in Ypsilanti Township, many township residents are looking for the board to have this, these type of policies. I know some people may say, well, they're paper policies. There's no, I guess you say there's no penalty, right? If someone steps out of line, they don't follow ethics or they don't follow conflicts of interest, there is no direct penalty. Well, the penalty, in my opinion, and also hopefully for the people who have asked for these policies to come forth, is the penalty of the voters deciding in the next election, what they would like to do. And I do believe that that is all the penalty that is needed. The voters have a right to have information if the, if there are board members that are not following ethics or not following disclosing conflicts of interest. And then the public has a right to decide if they want to continue having that board member service them or not. But that would be, in my opinion, the ultimate penalty. I do not believe that monetarily, at least by state law, there can be any type of monetary penalties that are attached to either one of these policies. So that is my comment. Thank you, Madam Supervisor.
Questions or comments? Regarding the so what do you visualize as next steps, Monica?
Well, obviously, I think it's important that, because of the fact that those look to be board policies, that they do have the review of legal counsel. So if they can be reviewed by legal counsel, that would be very helpful. And then at that point, hopefully after that review, they can come back to the board for, to vote on.
Comments from board members?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Trustee Eldridge.
I would just thank trustee Ross Williams for bringing that forward. And as we move forward, we can continue to massage it and make sure it's a good document, which I think it already is. And hopefully implemented at some point in the future, but I do thank her for all the work she put into it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes, trustee Wilson.
Yeah, I just want to, I have no issue with both of these policies. And if the board wants to bring it forth to a regular meeting to vote on, that's fine. My only comment is, it reminds me of, I believe it was a policy that trustee Eldridge was bringing forth about the full-time electives and their attendance. And I think the board kind of pretty much had the sentiment of, since there's no real teeth in it, can't really be enforced on elected officials. We did not proceed. So this seems to be kind of in that same realm, that same category, but but again, if the board wants to move forward later down the line, I have no issue with it because all these policies I, I live by anyway. So but that's all I wanted to make a comment on. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, trustee Wilson.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I, I, thank you. I do agree with trustee Wilson. Unfortunately, you cannot put a, any type of monetary penalty on this type of policy because it does go against state law as it relates to the, especially the full-time officials, how much they are paid. And basically with part-time officials, the stipends that are agreed upon. But I do believe that the public as, as a, as a body, right? As a body that actually elects us and pays our salaries, because that's actually who does it, is the public, that they do have a right to know, right? If board members are not aligning with ethics, if board members are not aligning with conflicts of interest. Not all, I guess you could say, policies necessarily need to have a penalty that's attached to them. The penalty by the board anyway, the penalty can be by the public. And I believe that as it relates to ethics and conflicts of interest, it's really important that our township, not now and in the future, make sure that we are setting the standard as it relates to both of these issues. So I hope that helps.
Thank you.
Madam Supervisor.
Yes. Clerk Rob?
Yeah, I just, um, on the ethics policy, I think that MTA has, I mean, the issue of of the being more specific so that it was, you know, clear. And I think it can be more than just a board policy. It could be a policy, part of our handbook with the township, that, that I know that Karen Wallens has been working on revamping a lot of those policies. I, you know, that could be clearer so that you know clearly if you're, like, for instance, you know, gifts and lunches or there's been developers who send over a whole spread of food to the, you know, township. Obviously to try to get influence. I don't think it works, but you know, things of that kind of magnitude that we might look to other MTA and other sources for, to make it more specific. So it's, you know, it's something that can be measurable, that people can actually be held accountable. Yes, you violated it or no, you didn't, for both board and for, for all township employees, I think is something that we could look at. And so maybe that might be a place together with the attorney to send them, you know, with Karen and her group that's looking at all the policies. And the conflict of interest, I think it might be really helpful. And this is probably where the attorney could help out, is just to outline in a form as Monica has put together, but more specific on exactly what the law says about that for both, you know, township employees and for township board members, because it's really pretty specific of, as to what is a conflict of interest for elected officials. And I'm sure that there's language out there that can be used for, you know, for employees also. So I think when we look at it, we should probably look at it. Both of these policies would be, you know, it's polit, policies that could be more specific to how more accountable. So it's clear when you read it exactly what it means and whether an employee or a township board member violated them, regardless of, you know, what kind of penalties you can do, because we know that's going to be different, but for employees versus elected officials. But, um, so it's that it's clear exactly what it is that we're trying to hold people accountable for. That would just only be my suggestion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yep. Yep. There was a reason why I basically, number one, did not direct us towards township staff is because that, those type of policies should directly come from HR. So if HR, if there's not either one of these policies that exists already for township staff, that would be something that hopefully HR will look into with the township attorney and be able to, you know, develop. But as it relates to the board, that's a different factor. And again, I did, and I hope this does go over to the township attorney to make sure that the, the intent of both of these policies are to the letter of the law. But the board has another type of authority that township employees don't have. And it's the authority over fifty-seven thousand residents and their financial revenue that is given to the township. And so because of that, I do, I do wholeheartedly believe that the board policy should be separate from the employee policy. The employee policy basically is dealing with the acts of what it is that they do on the job as related to the job that they held. The township board of trustees have the authority once they come together. Or even as separate trustees and their fiduciary duty over the authority of fifty-seven thousand residents directions for Ypsilanti Township. I think that is different. So I just wanted to make sure I pointed that out. And lastly, I did get information from MTA for, for both of these policies. In fact, that is a lot of the body of language has came from Michigan Township Association. So that's all.
Great. And I, I think we have some, I think I, I heard Clerk Rowe just asking for not as broad, more specific. I think that's what I heard her say. And I do believe that there is a conflict of interest or some sort of gift policy in our policy and procedure manual that we currently have. I was just searching for it. I couldn't find it, but we may have something there. And I, you know, I have no issues with the policies. It's how, how do we proceed? And let's do it in a manner that this is more general and we're looking for more specifics, like you said, gifts was one of the things that you mentioned. And so how does that? What's the professional recommendation on that? And I don't know, but to do this in general, you know, Monica, I, I have no objections to it. We just need more specific policy to understand exactly what we're asking of elected officials and maybe even planning, you know, different committees as well that we appoint, you know, as far as conflict of interest and stuff like that. But so if I heard, I didn't hear any objections to what Monica has brought forward, but it would be the attorney and can be working on it. And I know we can find other examples that other communities have. We're not, you know, recreating something. And so between MTA and MML, the Michigan Municipal League, I'm sure there's examples that we can look to to help fine tune what has been brought forward. And I see that I have, there's one attendee whose hand is raised. Joanne McCollum?
Hi, thank you, Supervisor Stumbo. It's about the conflict of interest and ethics of board policy. Thank you, trustee Ross Williams, for creating this. I think it's well needed. I just have something to say about making it more specific or whatever. I understand that. But at the same time, I don't want to see it get so specific to someone chooses to do something that is actually a conflict of interest or unethical and say, well, it wasn't on the list. So it should be okay. So, you know, I guess it's a happy medium there to try and make sure that it's not too specific that someone would take advantage of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's a good point. Like I said, I really believe that there are other examples in other communities. I serve on other boards and commissions that have similar conflicts and conflict of interest or policies. So whatever we can do to help get information to the attorney's office, that would probably be helpful. And Monica, thanks for bringing it forward.
No problem. Thank you.
So do you guys want to go to the regular meeting or for the work session?
And Supervisor Stumbo?
Yes.
I had sent out an email, but I didn't, and then I tried to call, anyways, I was rushing around getting a check to the printers, but I know that emails went back and forth between the rights of refusal on the, the properties that Catherine McCleary has said that's in the township. There's two of them. And, um, and then one of them was Carver, which I know Habitat, I sent it forward to them and they are interested in purchasing that. And I think it was, I can't remember exactly. I'm sorry, I apologize. But I think it was sixteen thousand, but I know that Catherine has said no by October first that we don't have a board meeting. So I didn't know it was all right if we could, if the board wanted to add that to agenda and allow us to purchase that one with turning that over to Habitat. If everything can be worked out before October first with Habitat in agreement. Otherwise, I mean, it's so cheap, a piece of property. We know what's going to happen to it if we don't get it and Habitat doesn't get it. You know, become, you know, another rental home. So anyways, that's not on the agenda. So my request is, is the board want to put that under other business and allow us to go ahead and purchase that if, you know, based on if everything can be worked out and we can get them writing from Habitat that they, however, we normally do it when Habitat wants the properties. I know the other, they listed them as one, but they're actually two separate parcels. So I don't know. That's part of the investigation too, is Catherine only going to sell that to us if we take both of them, which, which is kind of weird because they're not even owned by the same people. Maybe that's something that if we decided we wanted to, Doug could look into for us and get the arrangements with Habitat like we normally do.
I'm, I'm sorry. I, I apologize, Karen. I'm looking for the email that you sent out. And I do think we will have another meeting before October first because Doug and I have been going over the solid waste or minus the contract, the new contract, and I spoke to you earlier about it. And there's a lot of clarifications that Attorney Winters has asked for, just for understanding, you know, exactly what it's meant. Make sure we are on the same page. It's different language. It's a whole new contract. And we are not prepared And we are not prepared, Mr. Winters, tell me if I'm speaking out of turn, to recommend approval of the draft that was sent over to us. So I'm looking probably to to call a meeting before October 1st via Zoom on the contract. So that'll give us time to look at it. I, I don't, I don't see where you sent it, but I, I'm trying to go through my emails. I don't have any information to even talk about.
Yeah, it's just a, well, there was a house for on the rights arrest first refusal on, for on Carver. And I think it was 16,000. I have to go back and find that email. And she, she, she listed as there's only one and she put, and it was real weird, the description. So I think Doug or somebody sent it to Brian. So I got it. We got an email back from Brian McCleary from Accessing, who said it's actually two separate parcels. And he gave the parcel, he gave the maps and pictures and, um, of them. So it was weird that it's strange that Catherine put both of them together. I don't even, I'm not even sure if they're next to each other. But anyways, the one on Carver actually on the outside appears to be, I know Habitat is interested.
Well, it-
On the outside, it appears to be a decent looking house. Who knows what the insides? And I know it's cheap enough that a landlord will pick it up for a rental, probably at 16,000. That was where the minimum bid would start. But if we're having a meeting, you-
Why would it have time to look at it and consider it? I know, I'm sorry, Karen. I, I haven't had the opportunity to, to look at what you're proposing. I, I know Doug sent over a letter last night and I also know that Habitat has a lot of homes that are in a holding pattern too. You know?
Madam Chair?
They're not really, um, they're not completed yet, but I would rather, you know, have it go to affordable home as opposed to being a rental, you know? I'm not prepared to put it on this. And well, I gotta find the information. I don't even know. That's me. If I'm sorry, I just don't have enough information to even talk about it at this meeting much.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Attorney Winters?
In the event, if it comes back to the board, a special meeting, I think Mike Razzick's on this Zoom meeting right now. I don't, it's a couple of things. Number one, I would never want to see the board get involved in another situation that occurred over there in Elder Street where Habitat bought the house, didn't buy the adjacent vacant property. And we've been dealing with that issue
That's true.
ever since. And in fact, we've had some very serious threats made in regards to that situation that over there in Elder Street. I was very disappointed. And I said this in my letters that after Habitat acquired that property, they allowed that gentleman to go back inside of the house and store personal property, which also contributed to some serious issues when it came time to have that personal property removed from both inside their property, once again, as well as the vacant property he was living on. In my letter last night, I only mentioned the fact that I thought Habitat was, had, was going in a different direction only because of meetings that I attended in which they were saying that they were going to get more involved in acquiring homes that were prefabricated, modular type homes, and they were going to set them on some of the properties they had acquired. In fact, I think one of the properties that they mentioned was over there off of Holmes Road, they were going to actually replace. I think that Chief Building Official Dave Bellers has also been involved in conversations and I know Mike has where I'm not so sure that they may not ultimately end up demolishing the one house on Elder Street, which they did purchase. There's a lot of issues that, you know, it's been a long time that ever since we've had a conversation with Habitat as to houses that they have purchased from us through the right of first refusal that have not been rehabilitated. I think at some point, I think at one point in time, we found a house that had been sitting vacant for nine years after it was purchased from us. So I, again, I, I've not had any communication with Rob Niss or anybody else in regards to whether they're still interested in doing what they started out doing so successfully 10 years ago or longer. But, uh, I do know that if we do pursue it, it would require a resolution that we've done in the past, notifying the treasurer that we're going to acquire their property. I know nothing at all about anything to do with the title documents. Like sometimes we end up having to quiet the title for a number of reasons or Habitat does. But, um, I'm more than, I'm more than willing to pursue looking into it, the board direction to do that. I just and not hearing from, I don't think any of us heard anything at all from the treasurer and county treasurer. And, um, I would say I did find it somewhat ironic that she asked the city and township and village clerks to assess the legality of acquiring properties under the right of first refusal when it was the county treasurers that were actually the ones that were selling these properties for dollar, for, for dollar amounts that were far in excess of what they were lawfully allowed to keep. And in fact, they were turning those dollars over to the general fund, that Supreme Court case I cited last night, we talked about the last meeting clearly states that you cannot keep any surplus funds beyond the amount of the, of the delinquent tax, the penalties, the interest, et cetera. And that's what the county treasurer has been doing for years over there. In fact, I, I noted in my letter last night, and I would say it again, that I attended many meetings with her. And what she would boast about how much money she had turned over to the county's general fund, there were surplus dollars that were generated from the sale of those properties. In fact, there was a lot of roadblocks that were put up to prevent us from trying to exercise the right of first refusal. I think it's a good policy to still follow regardless of whether Habitat is a partner or not. Again, this is one house and one vacant lot, I think. I'm not really sure exactly why they're separating. But I would like to do some due diligence if it's possible, if, if the board feels like we should do this because Habitat in the past has also given us a letter that says that they're going to reimburse us 100% our cost for acquiring the property, which again is the exact amount. And why it's 16,000, I don't know where that number came from. I looked at, I looked at the back, property taxes on that property. I don't, I don't know how she came, I don't know how she came up with that number. So there's a little bit more information that I would want to look at, given that, with, given the history we've had with acquiring these properties. And also with, again, Mike Razzick may know more than I do about some of these homes that have been acquired by Habitat, but have yet to be, but have yet to be rehabilitated. And whether or not they're going to be rehabilitated or whether or not they're going to actually end up becoming sites for pre-constructive fabricated homes, which also there's a strong market for as well. I'm not having objections to that. I just don't know if their business model has changed. If their paradigm model has changed. We never saw them going to foreclosures before where they actually were, did institute foreclosures a couple of times and in fact, they ended up selling one of their properties to Peter Jordan and other investors through a, through a foreclosure. So a lot of things have changed in the last few years. And I'm just not really sure right now what the current state is. I think it's a good policy for the board to continue. Just don't know if this is the right property right tonight. I mean, right, a property to pursue it. I don't, I don't know anything about it.
So wait, if we have a special meeting, Karen, so we can put all the information together and the resi- the resolution together that we have to do and-
Yeah, I, yeah. Yeah, I just, I mean, because you know, we just found out, was it yesterday or day before? And then Doug wrote his letter yesterday. So, you know, otherwise, you know, we could spend more time on it, but because I'm not even sure about her timeline, because you know, normally we would get these in May and we'd have, you know, quite some time to figure out if we, you know, if Habitat won, like Doug said, work out on the resolution and so, so that's why I just kind of brought it up with the timeline. I think if we're going to have a meeting next week or the week following that, you know, as long as it's before that, I think October 1st is a Thursday, as long as it's before that Thursday, if that's what we wanted to do, that, yeah, the two property, one is like, you know, maybe we want to get that other little piece. I don't know. It's a little parcel on, um, I think it's on Bomber. And then the other piece, of course, is on Carver. So they're not next to each other. But I thought if I looked at it, like, it looked like she put them all in one minimum bid, which is kind of, even though they're, I didn't know there were two separate parcels until Doug or whoever asked Brian to put together the pictures and the descriptions. And it was clear that there's two separate parcels and the one does look like a cute little house and at least from the outside, it looks presentable. And I know that, um, Habitat, you know, we haven't had a meeting in a while, but I know that with them, but I know that, um, their idea going to those prefab or I guess that's, you know, where the frame, they're already framed and the roofs are on them. And then they just come in and do what they normally do inside. I know they've done it. I know one of them because the one's over on, um, it's by where the sidewalk people are, on by lathers. They've done one. It's a cute little house that they put on a lot there. And I think that direction was because there's, you know, like normally we'd have six, seven, eight on these, you know, foreclo- these tax sales and because those number of houses being coming available, I know are less and less. And we could get the numbers too on how many they have out there and what they're planning on doing and how much they're wrapping up this year. I know things slowed down too because of COVID for them, but how many they're going to actually sell. I know we get invited almost every two or three weeks to open house. So I know they're clearing some of their inventory that they've sold, but how many they're planning on doing next year into, in 2021. But I do know that they were interested because I sent, once Brian sent that information out, I forwarded the, to Rob and he said they didn't really have interested. The lot must be too small to put on a house on or something. He wasn't interested in that because I know he's interested in picking up parcels too. They don't have anything on them, but they, he definitely, they were definitely interested in the Carver house. So maybe-
We'll add it to this agenda, but if there's a special meeting, I'm absolutely here and, and looking into it and having more information. I do think we have to do a resolution as well.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. So, um, do you want to review the agenda or do you guys want to take a break? I'll do whatever you want.
It doesn't matter. I know I'm probably going to be losing power off of my iPad. So I need to go get a plug. So whichever works best with the board.
Board members, you want to take a break?
Yes, break sounds great.
All right, then we'll reconvene at seven o'clock. Thank you very much.
Oh, she says we can just mute and turn off our video or use the same invite if you have to go out. All right.
Yeah.
Hey Brenda. Uh oh, now I can't.
I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. And the first item on the agenda, please, trustee Heather Gerald Rowe is not present. She may be late. The first item on the agenda is for a public hearing for Resolution 202011, the creation of Neighborhood Streetlight Special Assessment District, number 2019, which is Crystal Pines. So I would like to declare that the public hearing is open. Are there any residents that are on the Zoom meeting that would like to speak regarding the public hearing? All right. I'm going to just give the residents a few more minutes. This is a public hearing for the Neighborhood Streetlight Special Assessment District for Crystal Pond.
Madam Supervisor?
Yes.
While we're waiting, is all right if I read, I only got one comment via email.
Sure.
Yeah, it's from Ms. Shakina Arrington, who lives at Crystal Pines, and they support and are happy that Lombardo is paying for the streetlights and for the cameras to be installed, but would really prefer that their association pick up the fees. I explained to her, I sent it back saying that DTE does not work that way and that the association could hire an electrical contractor to put in lights if they wanted to. But, and then they're associated, they could have an agreement with the association, but that DTE will only work with the municipality. Explain that to her and then also that, um, and then, and explain to her how the law worked in regards to special assessment districts. And then I didn't hear back from her after that.
So that was the only?
That was the only comment I got in support of it. Glad Lombardo is paying for the installation of both, but would rather have their association pay for them versus each individual.
The association paid for the operation, Cal, Clark Rowe?
Yes, yes, for both assessment districts.
All right, I'm going to give just one last chance for anyone that lives in the Crystal Pond area to make any comment. Hearing none and seeing no hands to be raised, then we're going to close the public hearing at 7:04. Clark Rowe?
Um. Do we read the resolution?
Well.
Or you want to add the other public hearing first?
No, I would like to have two separate public hearings, correct?
Correct.
That's how it's looking. The only, my concern is on the resolution is it appears to be the resolution from May or something, the last meeting, I'm not sure, but it only has, the resolution only has two wooden poles. It doesn't have 11 Granville and two wooden. So the, the resolution is not correct with the DTE agreement.
Hang on one second, get in front of me.
But I don't, I don't think we can take action on.
No, it has, you have to read the whole thing. It has 11 Granvilles and that the two wood poles are for the lights that have, that we have to do those for the cameras.
I'm aware of that, but the resolution doesn't refer to it.
Yeah, well, I'm reading the third paragraph, are you, so it doesn't? The one I have does, so I don't know, are you saying the one in the packet's wrong?
I don't know, I'm just, I'm so sorry, I'm just reading the, maybe, I don't know.
I have one, the third paragraph speaks to 11 Granville lights.
Madam Chair?
Trustee Ross Williams.
Okay, are we talking about, I'm hoping we're talking about this one. Resolution 202011, and this for District 219. So the third paragraph reads, if, this is, this is what I'm looking at anyway. On March 13th, Brandon Fannin of Detroit Edison Community Light Group prepared and submitted proposed plans to install street lightings for Crystal Pines, Ipsal County Township, consistent of 90 parcels, which said plans included in our ladder, the installation of two wood poles, two six-arm, and two LED illuminations with luminaries with gray housings, with the cost of said improvements being approximately. So that's how this one in the packet reads, so I'm not sure, but that's how it reads.
A public hearing of May 19th, that's why I know it's not correct. And Clark Rowe, so I'm not sure what you have, but we don't have that. So we could have the public hearing and then adopt the resolution at the next meeting? Would that be?
That would be fine. I'm sorry about that, somehow I got this one, so. I'm just going to check to see if.
Board members, other board members, I'm not, do you have the same resolution where you have two wooden poles on it? Okay, Larry says you have to stand? Okay.
Well, I apologize for that because I have the right one in front of me and, so yeah, we could do that. And then October, put the resolution back on there.
Okay, all right. Next, so we had the public hearing, it was closed, so now I'm going to open up the second public hearing, which is for the Creation Neighborhood Camera Special Assessment District 075 for Crystal Pond. At this time, is there any member of the public that would like to comment on the Creation Special Assessment District for the neighborhood cameras? Any public comments? Okay, I hear no public comments, so I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:08. And Clark Rowe, there is a resolution and once again, it's, I think it's the old resolution, I'm not sure.
Although, it's the same, this one didn't change. It's the same number of cameras.
Well, you have a May 19th date as a, as the public hearing?
No, I don't, yeah, I don't have that one, so we, we obviously, no, I know, but I have, I haven't, I printed mine off from the packet or from my packet, but obviously we put the wrong ones on the.
Just, again, on this one, maybe, is it me?
I have May 19th as well.
Okay.
So we'll have to do the same thing and I apologize for that.
Okay, so we'll put these on the next agenda then. Any questions, board members or? All right. At this time, we can have public comments. People could give their name, an address for the record, and as you know, it's three minutes. Are there any public comments? I see one person. Joanne?
Good evening, my name is Joanne McCollum. I live at 1900 Tyler Road, Ypsilanti, Michigan. And I want to say thank you to Supervisor Stumble for the lights on Michigan Ave. They're coming, they're looking really good, it looks really good. I don't know, just getting some lights. They weren't even turned on when I passed by, they just, I didn't envision them being black, I think they're black. And they just look really sophisticated and, you know, hopefully our property values will go up just for those out there, I don't know. I want to say thank you also to trustee Ross Williams for the ethics and conflict of interest policies. I really like the part that it says resist all temptation and outside pressure to use the position of trustee and fiduciary for singular benefit or for any other individual or agency apart from the total interest of the people of Ipsal County Township. I think something like that you have to keep in your mind all the time if you're in a position that you, of power, you just have to remind yourself. But I don't know how you can do this, but this really needs to be done. There, the, the board does not need to have same family members on that board. It just, I don't think it should be anywhere. Because the temptation to want to help your loved one in a situation is very strong. And you can overlook that because you want to help your loved one. But again, as with trustee Wilson said, if there was consequences of this, then you would think twice, you know, you may want to help your loved one or you may want to do this or that, but there is a consequence to my behavior. That's how the world runs, you need consequences. So I just want to say that we need some consequences here. And I still say whatever, however you do it, talk to a lawyer, the state or somebody. But that needs to end, the, the family thing, relationship thing on a board, the same board needs to end for the people of the township. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, I see another raised hand, this. David Benoy?
Yeah, hi, everyone. First, I'd like to just say thank you to the entire board. I, we finally, in my neighborhood, received the green rollaway waste management bins, so I'm appreciative of that. And I had communicated with Brenda a couple of weeks ago and just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention. Different parts of the township, I'm at 1346 Rambling Road in the Holmes Road neighborhood. We've been experiencing, for the first time in my six years of living here, issues with rats in our neighborhood, much like West Willow early, later last year. So Brenda informed me of some of the similar things she was planning in terms of code enforcement that was initiated in West Willow. But I also wanted to remind you guys as we go into budgeting season that I think a large concern for many of our, my neighbors would be brush collection, which I personally believe may contribute to the issues we're having with rodent control, just giving them a place of shelter and whatnot. So I'd like you guys to consider as you go into the budget season, reinstating that even if it is on some sort of modified service delivery. So it's really all I had for you guys and I'd like to thank you for your continued work and service to the township.
Thank you very much. Are there other comments? We'll move on to the agenda, the first is a consent agenda, which is the minutes of the August 18th regular meeting and the August 26th special meeting. It also includes statements and checks for September 1st, September 15th, and the healthcare deductible for August 2020 and Choice Healthcare Administration fee for August 2020.
Would some move the consenting agenda?
Motion. Motion love Joy Rose, support with the Eldridge?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I did have a question, I'm trying to find it because I'm not in my normal location. It was more, I got to figure out where it was here, it's towards the back, but it made a statement that basically I didn't believe that the residents of Ipsal County Township trust the police department. Could, I would like to have that rechecked because I don't remember saying all the residents of Ipsal County Township doesn't trust, don't trust the police department. So I just wanted to make sure that was checked against the recording. Okay, thanks.
Which meeting was that?
That would be the last one.
26th, the special meeting? All right, we can do that.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we have a motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, trustee Heather Gerald Rowe has joined us. The next item on the agenda is general legal update, Mr. Winters?
Madam Chair, just a couple of updates, I'll keep it fairly brief. But I've written a number of letters, I see Larry laughing at me. A number of letters the last two, two and a half years regarding the David Kircher lawsuit. And I know that for some board members, we were here back in 2004 when David Kircher was actually criminally prosecuted as well as sued by the township for discharging raw sewage into the Huron River. He actually went to prison for those criminal acts and we spent a number of years in regards to abiding that public nuisance. Eventually, while he was in prison, bankruptcy proceedings were filed on Eastern Highlands on that property, other properties that which he owned in both the city and the township. And we thought that it was over. A few years ago, David Kircher with another, a different attorney, filed three counts against the township for, you know, inverse condemnation, making some pretty wild allegations that the township had some kind of motivation to secretly acquire Eastern Highlands. And while he filed this lawsuit against the township and he filed a similar one against the city, alleging inverse condemnation, the Michigan Municipal League, which is the township's insurer, does not provide coverage to the township on claims of inverse condemnation. And so that meant the township had all of the risk, all of the exposure, all of the costs borne on the backs of the township. We had files going back 20 years. And because of the nature of this lawsuit, Plaken and Cooney have been involved also in the city of Ypsilost that went to the Court of Appeals in Cincinnati, very similar case. They were involved in our case as well. And I mentioned in some of my letters that the judge has totally dismissed this lawsuit once again with prejudice and basically has stated in no uncertain terms that the lawsuit was frivolous and, and any efforts to amend the complaint would be futile. And I just wanted to take a moment because even the last 16, 17 years, there's so many different people that, you know, somewhere or another touched what occurred here in Eastern Highlands. Even the late Iran Fulton was named as a defendant in the current case, spent an awful lot of time out there with Director Mike Radzick, township attorney. Dennis McLean was involved in all of the legal proceedings that went up to the Michigan Supreme Court. Joe Lawson was involved in all of these. And through it all, the township did the right thing, but at the same time, I somewhat have mixed feelings because of the fact the township had to bear this by ourselves. I reached out before with the township's insurer as to why they don't provide coverage for inverse condemnation because other insurance carriers do provide that coverage. And in light of what occurred here, and even though the facts in this case lined up behind the township, I'm still concerned that future cases down the road alleging inverse condemnation under a different situation could find the township spending a fair amount of dollars in defending our lawsuit, defending the case, but not have the coverage. I think it's a fair question to bring up to the MML LPP. Again, a number of their competitors that ensure other townships do provide this coverage. And I just think it'd be somewhat remiss on my, my part not to at least encourage the future board and new board members to be that we need to at least, while we can take comfort in knowing that the federal court dismissed this lawsuit, I still remain concerned about future lawsuits of claiming inverse condemnation. And as a side note, I did have to disclose this lawsuit as part of the this lawsuit as part of the township's audit letter. And I've also advised the auditor, Raina Emmons uh of the dismissal of the case because uh you always have to disclose any kind of a lawsuit where there's a possibility of liability. And as we all know, when you get into the court system, sometimes things can go different direction. But any event, uh I believe this case is finally over. The appeal period is to file uh a claim of appeal has come and gone. Doesn't mean that you can put the file away just yet. We've kept it for twenty years. I guess we, we can keep it for a few more. I just wanted to at least recognize uh the people that were involved in this. The township board uh in like the two thousand four uh was very, very proactive in responding to the residents who were having to live in some very, very uh squalid conditions over there, Eastern Highlands. Uh, on a different note, uh it finally appears that we're going to get the fire suppression system installed at Kaiser School. That's been uh a challenge, and uh the bank involved in the financing for the fire suppression system uh has signed off on the con- contract for the contractor to install the fire suppression system. Uh, those plans are currently being reviewed uh by Fire Marshal Dan Kimball, as well as the Fire Chief. And eventually, they'll need uh certain permits from the township's building department. But uh suffice it to say that it was always the goal of the township to um ensure compliance with the uh fire building code so that uh anyone using the sanctuary would not be uh in harm's way. So that one is finally, uh well, it's not been completed, but at least the hard, the heavy lifting in terms of actually getting approval and the plans being prepared are under, under review. I did meet with Travis uh, the DUBO, the IT, to go over the coffee tree contract with him. It's always very interesting to sit down, talking with Travis. I enjoy learning about a lot of things about the IT world. And uh, we had a good conversation. And so they did have a revised contract as a result of uh our discussion, and I'll be sending a letter over to the board. I do think it's important to have that type of firewalls uh that can prevent uh people outside trying to hack into our systems. And we've seen many situations in, in the media where certain skilled people can take control of a system and then demand ransom to retrieve your pass codes, and uh that ransom gets paid by in the form of the cryptocurrency like Bitcoin. And uh, it's not publicized as much as uh you, you might think, but it occurs on a very, very regular basis. And uh finally, I think right now, Karen Wallen and I will be uh meeting in the weeks ahead to discuss uh the ASME contract, uh which uh expires at the end of twenty, uh twenty, twenty, uh twenty twenty. And the uh Teamsters, as requested under their contract, that they have a wage reopen, or their contract does not end until twenty twenty-one. But it does provide for them to have an opportunity to have a wage reopen her uh is, is a January this year. So um, as in previous attorney reports, uh you can sort of see the broad swath of issues that are coming across uh all of your desk at different times. I can't help but just weigh in. Well, one comment on the gentleman's uh concern about the uh potential rat problem over there in the neighborhood, we, you mentioned in the brush. And uh I will say right now that the OCS department and has been very, very aggressive in trying to identify those properties that have blight. And the board has been very, very aggressive in authorizing us to get those properties cleaned up. And uh, we've done everything we can to try and encourage that, because we do know that what he said is true, that uh the more uh areas you have to, to harbor rodents, that promotes their growth. And um, I did do a term paper many years ago on rats, so I kind of feel like I have to at least weigh in and say that what he said was exactly uh true, that if you create an environment for uh nesting, that it will promote the uh the, the infestation of the, the rodent. So anyways, uh OCS though is spending an awful lot of time out there checking on the properties that would result in potential, uh you know, rats being populated. And so uh, there's a lot of things that are happening all at one time. But uh you have a great team that's uh, uh you, you have a great team at the staff level to do everything that uh is being asked of them, so uh just want to give you that brief update. Update, maybe not brief.
Winters, are there questions or comments? Hearing none, we will move on to old business. We have the second reading of proposed ordinance twenty twenty-four ninety-three, which is an ordinance to amend chapter sixty-two, article four, section sixty-two dash seventy-seven of the Code of Ordinances. Better touch it, Ypsilanti, to adjust sewage disposal rates. The first reading was held at the August eighteenth regular meeting. Clerk Row?
I have ordinance number twenty twenty dash four ninety-three to amend charter chapter sixty-two, article four, sections sixty-two through seventy-seven of the Code of Ordinances to adjust the sewage disposal rate. Be it ordered by the Charter, Tasha, Ypsilanti, that section sixty-two through seventy-seven chap- of sec- of chapter sixty-two, article four of the Code of Ordinances revised as follows. For all billings rendered prior to October first, twenty twenty, existing sewage disposal rate shall prevail. For all billings rendered on or after October first, twenty twenty, charges for sewage disposal services shall be as filed for each bimonthly, which is a two-month period. Rightestness to serve rates based on the meter. The meter's size inch is five eighths to three fourths. The sewer rate is sixteen forty-seven, sixteen dollars and forty-seven cents. One inch is forty-one dollars and eighteen cents, one, one half, one and a half inches is eighty-two dollars and thirty-six cents. Two inches, a hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy-eight cents. Three inches is four and eleven dollars and seventy-nine cents. Four inches is eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents. Six inches, one thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixteen cents. Eight inches, two thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-four cents. Ten inches, four thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy cents. And twelve inches is five thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents. The commodity rate is two dollars and seventy-one cents per cubic foot. Um, and there, I would support that, the change in ordinance. So moved.
Or.
Motion, Row, support Doe to approve the second reading. Discussion. Director Castro is here if there are any questions. Hearing that, we'll do a roll call vote, because this is a ordinance. Clerk Row?
Yes. Yes.
Treasure Doe?
Yes.
Trustees Eldridge?
Yes.
Darryl Row?
Yes.
Ross Williams?
Yes.
Wilson Jr.?
Yes.
The se- the second reading is approved and adopted.
How did you vote, Brenda?
Brenda, vote yes.
Thank you.
Under new business, we have a close to approve agreement with DTE for the installation of one streetlight at the intersection of Clark Road and Ford Boulevard to facilitate a public safety camera in the amount of one thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars fifteen cents, which is budgeted in line item two six six three zero one zero 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 nine seven seven zero zero zero.
Support Eldridge.
Motion Doe, support Eldridge. Uh, Michael Radzick is also on the Zoom meeting. If anyone has any questions regarding this? Michael, did you have a few comments to me?
Sheriff's Department has given us a list um of several locations where they would like to have community security cameras. Uh, this is one of the top priority locations. Uh, there is no suitable um streetlight at that intersection. So the addition of the streetlight will not only uh enable us to put that camera up for uh police investigative purposes, but it will also enhance traffic safety because that is a very dark intersection. Many of you may know that a lot of motorists have crashed going northbound on Ford Boulevard where it dead ends. They've crashed through the fence onto the golf course property over the years. So this will illuminate that intersection and provide um improved traffic safety in addition to the addition of that uh security camera.
Thank you, Mr. Radzick. Questions or comments?
Madam Chair, just a comment. Um, if it's other. Yeah, um, thank you for bringing this forward. Uh, uh, Mike. Um, I do believe that that area is in need of a security camera. Um, and it's direct, especially um how close uh the senior tower is over there also. Um, and, and it does have gotten a lot of accidents in that area, so um I'm hoping that this will be helpful uh to decrease that.
Couldn't agree more.
Thank you. Any other comments? I would just like to say, Michael, I want to thank you for taking the lead on the cameras installation because um they our police department has used it very successfully in solving several um crimes. And who knows, we can, we'll never know how much a prevent crime, but we absolutely know how much they're used as a tool to solve crimes. So I appreciate bringing this forward, and I know you and I have been working with the, the road commission and the sheriff's department. Uh, maybe eight years, I'm not sure, but um patience is important, but we're looking at getting them on um traffic signals as well. So, and the only purpose is for police um to investigate crimes. And um we hope to have that moving forward next year, hopefully. Maybe this year, but I doubt it. It goes with the nine, the new nine-one-one center, correct, Michael?
Um, it's my understanding they're planning to move the Metro Dispatch operation from Ann Arbor out to the Zebra Road location, the Western County Service Center. And when they do that, they plan to integrate all those uh road commission traffic camera feeds into Met- Metro Dispatch to be able to record all those feeds.
So they currently have them, they just don't record them.
Correct.
Just so people know. And then they're also used, um, if there's an incident for evacuation, then um they can control the lights in order for the police and the fire and whoever else, I don't know who else would do it, but they can control the lights in, in case of an emergency and a quick evacuation. So, great job. And then, all right. Motion, support, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. The next item is to set a public date of Tuesday, October twentieth, twenty twenty, at approximately seven PM for the special um assessment tax levy.
So moved.
Support.
Motion, Clerk Row? Support Wilson. Is there a discussion on this? We do this every year and um Clerk Row, do, do we send out notices to residents as well as part of it?
Um, for all those who, that were created a new SAD for the year, we'd send them out. It's, this is considered their second notice before they're actually taxed or special assessment is put on their property. So yes, we do them for all those created this year.
Yeah, we learned that and we, and um normally the special assessment is prior to September thirtieth. Is there any? There's no violation, I assume. We have to have the special assessment district, but our resolutions say that the annual special um assessment hearing is held before or on September thirtieth. In the future, we might want to look at doing it just a tad bit earlier, but.
What is today? Oh, the hearing itself, okay. I think we just got it last week, but.
Well, no. I, when I read the resolution, it says that we'll have the annual special assessment hearing before.
I hear you.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know why, if we just got, I don't know, I have no idea why. It was, it came late.
Just a, just a note for next year, that's all. We have a motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Number three is request to waive the financial policy and award the low quote for the purchase of a Bentrack four five zero zero Y to Weingard to Van Armour in the amount of twenty-six thousand four hundred and twenty-two, which is budgeted in line item two five two two five two zero 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 nine seven six zero zero zero.
So moved.
Support Eldridge.
Was that um trustee Wilson?
Yes.
I'm sorry, um, motion Wilson Eldridge. And I know that um, Michael was on the phone. If anyone has any, or the Zoom meeting, if anyone has any questions? Oh, there's a hand ring, let me get it. I'm not sure who this is. Um, Galaxy? You could give your name for the record.
You have to take off the mute button, too.
I did.
No, there's it's still on my screen.
Well, so it must be in there, then?
I don't know. Galaxy, are you wanting to comment? You take your mute button off.
Okay.
Lisa said she can't unmute them, so they must have it on themselves.
I've tried to unmute them, I can't either. All right, any questions or comments by the board?
I had a comment. I just, yeah, I just think several reasons why I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna vote against this, is one is it's a huge expenditure to mow just a a small area, and I know he said we could use it for other things, but and that we've done, I don't know how long the Hydro Dam's been there since Henry Ford's day. I don't know when we got it, but I think to just suspend that for one area. And plus, I think that all the studies show for environmental reasons, we really shouldn't be mowing around our waterways. It creates runoff, um makes it easier for all the contaminants to get into the water. It hurts the vegetation, or hurts for doesn't provide places for wildlife. So to me, if we, the area that where it gets steep, and I actually drove out and took a look at it, I've talked to Mike, Michael about it too, because I actually proposed that maybe we use the, the goats that they use down on the Huron River in the city of Ypsilanti, which he said they explored, and I'm assuming that that didn't work. But we don't need to mow where it's steepest. We need to just let that grow. So for those reasons, one is a budgetary item, like for fifty years, we haven't needed a mower, and I know that, I understand it's a safety thing, and I understand, I appreciate that. But we really don't have to go that, on that deep steep, and we should just let that grow. And then if you looked at the, where it's at, you, this part that's dangerous that they want this mower for would be perfect just to let that grow and have a nice clean cut, which is actually up where it's more visible and where you can see it, and still protect and make it better for their fishing for the waterways. And, you know, we have a lot of problems with, you know, um, water quality issues on Ford Lake and in, in this area, and so I don't think that we should be adding to that by continuing to mow an area that really shouldn't be mowed. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Row. Michael, do you have any?
Well, I can, I can share a little bit about that um clerk's comments. The, uh, one of the reasons why we have to mow this, this isn't really an option to let it go. One of the main uh choking points, when I started back in the dam in nineteen ninety-eight, was that the embankments were not being maintained to the state and federal guidelines. So you're not allowed to let wooded vegetation grow on it, and tall grass allows animals to burrow into the earth embankment, which is holding back the water. But with that being said, we've always had to cut the grass. And using a weed whacker for the majority of my time, it wasn't very much fun. And slipping falls, rolling over my ankle. Um, thankful I was young enough and I recovered very quickly. And it, this is a, a tool that is very helpful for us for the safety standpoint. With a small department, I can't really afford to have someone to go off on workman's comp. Because that's gonna cost us even more than the potential cost of this mower. So I understand the concern. It is a lot of money. But when we went researching ways to improve this, um, we looked at wireless, we looked at strictly slope design mowers. This one was the most versatile and most cost-effective. So, yes, we can still go back to the old way I did it twenty years ago, using a weed whacker and a little bit of a push mower, but this isn't the safest way to do it. But this isn't the safest way to do it in today's safe environment. So this is why I thought this was important. I tried this approach five years ago. It didn't really go anywhere, but I need to bring it forward because it is more important to me when it comes to safety and then our employees.
Michael, I see in your memo that you said that the park maintenance can use it for snow trail and ground maintenance activities as well.
So they offer a large variety of implements that can be purchased à la carte. Anywhere from special scissor cutter tools that you can do for trimming hedges that are above a person's head. So you don't have to climb ladders. Storm removal equipment, ag equipment for like golf courses or ball diamonds, soccer fields. They have a ton of variety of implements that easily can become, taken off and changed. So we, they had a demo out, they changed out stuff within just a few minutes. Matter of hydraulic lines, removing a couple of pins and belts. And you move on to the next implement and you go back to work. So it was a very versatile machinery and Mr. Hoffmeister could probably talk a little bit about his previous job. They had those machines as well and he can probably explain about his.
Right, thank you.
Madam Chair, sorry, no, Treasury Doe was first, go ahead.
Yeah, Mike, what, what is the degree of that hill? Just out of curiosity, I'm just, I'm looking at your 4500 tractor. I don't know if that's what we're buying or not, but this, you have to get the double wheels on it or is it 25 degrees? Is it 20 degrees?
Yeah, what we're proposing is the double wheel, so there'd be eight tires on this thing. So it has a real wide base and the slope can go up to 30. And we watched videos that they actually climbed over 35 degrees without an issue.
And what is the degree of the, the hill that we're mowing in?
Most of it's 30 to 35. With that areas of course being zero.
Okay. Just, yeah. Kind of figured that double four wheeler job looked pretty, pretty nifty, so, okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I don't know if, thank you. I don't know if Director Hoffmeister is still on the call. He's not, then now move on. But I know, like you said, it could, you mentioned that it could be used for some items relating to park and park maintenance. I, I didn't know if he was still on the call to possibly address what exactly those items could be.
Yep, Mike Hoffmeister is on the call. Michael?
Yeah, thank you. So certainly there are a multitude of adjustable pieces that can be utilized for multiple things. One of the other things that this could really help with is a lot of the ditch mowing that we currently do. Because of the grip and the wide stance of this machine, this will help us mow a lot of the ditches that we currently utilize in addition to the roadside tractor. The other thing that, that I can really see this machine doing is right now we plow and, or we, we snow blow snow off of all of our facility sidewalks at the community center, at the civic center and the LEC. This has the ability to put a plow on the front of it. That way we're saving man hours and labor time with a snow removal option where we can just drive it through our sidewalks and do it that way as well. So there's a variety of, variety of uses if we invest in some of the tools in the future or even next year for future use and efficiency.
So it would have a long-term, may as well say, cost benefit to the township.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Then supervisor?
Trustee Rowe, I mean clerk Rowe.
It's okay, um, you've convinced me, I'm gonna change my vote. But Michael, I was wondering what happened with the goats? You said you tried it, like, why didn't it work? Didn't that work out?
Well, so Larry, my operator Larry Boggs, he did a little research on that. And we didn't pull up the case into the Ypsilanti, but he talked about renting goats or what do you do with them? How often would you need them? Where do you house them? What precautions do we have to keep them safe? Cause they're right close to the roadway, maintain fencing. So there was a little bit of more research that would need to go in to be sure that we would do it properly for our situation. I guess.
The city of Ypsilanti just, they hired somebody and they come in and do all that.
Yeah, I, I guess I wasn't aware they did that. We didn't, I guess, I'll be honest with you, I just feel about getting ready to have goats on, on the property, you know? But I guess change, change is good. That's one wise, why we're here.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. I don't think the goats would help with snow plowing and things like that. Michael, I do trust you as, as our safety person, as our hydro person. And I know how hard it is for you to even ask for things. And I also understand clerk Rowe's comments as well, but I, I support the purchase. So we have a motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No opposed?
I told you, they convinced me, okay?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
After Michael said they could use it for all these other things, yeah. No offense to you, Michael Seren, but yeah, that made me feel better. We're not spending $26,000 on a, to mow a tiny piece of property, so.
Right, right. Good questions clerk Rowe, good questions. We have a motion support, always in favor, then we will go to the next item was the request to weigh the financial policy and improve UIS, which is a single source provider to provide programming services on the existing programmable logic controller at the hydro station in the amount of $10,125, which is budgeted in line item 252252000976000.
So move to approve.
Support Eldridge.
Motion Wilson, support Eldridge. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number five is a request to approve the proposal for professional services from Stan Tech for the MDR Trust Fund Grant Project at Loom Feather Point Park in the amount of $58,696, which is budgeted in line item 21297000975587. Motion Doe, support Wilson, is that correct?
No.
Rowe.
I'm sorry, support clerk Rowe. Discussion?
Madam Chair, just a comment. I just again, like to thank Director Hoffmeister for going out and pursuing these grant opportunities for our parks inside of our township and to make the improvements, especially as it relates to Loom Feather Park. I do believe that that's one of our premier parks and it's really exciting to see this, this proposal come forward. So thank you again, Mike, for all the great work you do for our parks.
Mr. Hoffmeister? Comment?
Yes, as you know, we were awarded a trust fund grant through the Michigan Department of Natural Resources for Loom Feather Park. Part of that agreement is requirement to contract with a prime professional that will take us from engineering and design all the way through construction administration. So this is that agreement. As part of my memo, you see the proposals that we did receive and we feel like Stan Tech is the best fit for this project.
And we, have we done the resolution already?
It's next.
That's coming.
Okay, all right. I'm just reading your one memo, I'm sorry, okay. We have a motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Yeah, it had to be. But like, we only had like May tags, so they're other housing meetings.
Are they in the meeting or?
I think she's having two meetings.
Number six is resolution 2020, Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund, the project agreement resolution.
I would so move the resolution.
Support.
We have a motion and support. We have a resolution? I'm so sorry, is it just the?
Yeah, you want me to read it?
No, I'm just looking for it. It's my fault.
Yeah, I'm slow, too.
Well, I have the.
I can read it. You want me to read it?
I don't have, do you have the, I don't have the resolution, do I? I don't think I do.
It was in the packet, I think, after that last run, I'm not sure.
Is it in the packet?
Yes.
Is there a, okay.
It's one of those. It says that we will appropriate all funds necessary, implement the project during the project period and provide our match of $296,500 as authorized by the department. We will maintain satisfactory financial accounts, documents and records to make them available to the department. That's the Department of Natural Resources for auditing at reasonable times. We will construct the project, provide funds, services, materials as may be necessary to satisfy the terms of the agreement. We will regulate the use of facility constructed and reserved under this agreement to assure the use thereof by the public on equal and reasonable terms. And we will comply with any and all terms of set agreement, including all terms not specifically set forth in the foregoing portions of the resolution. I would so move adoption of the resolution. Or do we already do that? We already did that? You already did the motion, didn't you?
Yes.
Correct.
Support by clerk Rowe.
Monica.
Yeah, it was actually Ross Williams, but yes, that I supported the motion.
It was Doe and Ross Williams? I'm sorry.
Yes, that's correct.
I'm so sorry. We have a motion by Doe, support by Ross Williams to approve the natural resources resolution for the trust fund project agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I found the resolution, clerk. The next item on the agenda is approve the amended agreement for subaward of federal financial assistance with Washaw County for construction of Spooner Cove bus stop.
No move.
Support?
We have been, a motion by clerk Rowe, support by trustee Ross Williams to approve the agreement. And Mr. Winters, this is in proper form?
Yes, it's actually an increase over the one that we originally considered because of the initial money that came from the city of Ypsilanti due to their not going forward with their depot project. The only question I have has been raised several times is, I know it's been asked of ATA as to what their game plan is for service for this bus stop shelter or this route. And irrespective of what you do on this project, I do think when, the township has been a constituent member of ATA and we were the one, one of the ones that actually convinced the voters in your township, obviously to support this. I do think that when Mike Hoffmeister makes a request and even more importantly, at times even the township officials reach out to the CEO, they ask what is the plan going forward? If nothing else, there should be a response. And as far as I know, unless a response came in the last day or so, that neither Mr. Hoffmeister or himself ever got a response back.
Clerk Rowe was communicating with him as well.
Yeah, supervisor Stumble, you got a response, you got the first response back, right? Saying, yeah, we're gonna try, but we not, we can't guarantee anything. And then I responded to that email basically saying, kind of what you just said, Doug. Maybe not as eloquently as you, but basically I said that, um, same thing. We've had this relationship, we've always met with this ahead of time, they blamed it on COVID. And we're, normally in the past, I mean, we haven't had to do it a lot since this last millage, but Brendan remembers and Larry too, is that if they needed to cut services because of a revenue issue and stuff, they would meet with us and we would look at the entire layout. They would come up with three or four plans where we could cut this and go to our services. And hey, they would come up with different alternatives and then we would all say, yeah, that'll work. And our goal always was, and I think it still is, just make sure everybody has some service, but just to wipe out, and what's really, for those of us that live over here, or if you come to the township much, I know Larry's seen it, I know Brendan has. You see these people and it's not winter and they're walking with their groceries. I saw somebody on my way back to the media today, a guy carrying a bunch of stuff, walking past Larry's house, trying to get probably down to, you know, Roundhouse or one of those, you know? And then you see people doing their groceries and stuff. So, and what I didn't understand, which I expressed to him, was that we had a lot of areas that wanted the bus shelters. Apple Ridge is one that really sticks in my mind. There's a lady over there that maintains that one and she just, is hurt so much about people in front of her house, have to stand out in the rain and everything. And they clearly told us number one was the Walmart one, because it was the highest use. Of course, we had to make sure those dollars had to be used. But of course, where the bus line is always where the, you know, the, they are eligible for CDBG, you know, lower income. Normally, that's where your bus routes are at, for, at least in our township. And they told us that, no, we couldn't do the Apple Ridge. The Scooter Cove was like number two. And then it's, so it's just, and I know that trustee Joe Rowe and Monica attended those, those meetings. And I know trustee Joe Rowe has told me that she's asked, and I don't know Heather, maybe you can speak in on this, I don't know. Yeah, you're still there. If, um, she's asked for the, the ridership routes, you know, to try to see, was that the best decision that was made for, you know, our area? But that's the part that really hurt me was that we would have put our heads together and said, you know, maybe you're gonna do less service on Foley or on where, you know, some other place in the township and still save the money to at least provide, you know, even if they could just do three times a day in the morning, afternoon, evening, so people could get to the grocery store, cause that's what they do. And we have such a high density, you know, of subsidized housing between the different apartment complexes. So it's really hurtful. And I hate Brendan, I're gonna see it and Larry, this, in the winter, they don't, there's no sidewalks. So they're gonna be out in the middle of the road and it's so unsafe. So anyways, we, we voiced our concerns, believe me, Doug. And he promised me that he was, he said he was sorry about not doing that and meeting with us ahead of time, but because of COVID and they had to make these drastic cuts so fast that, um, and so, and he said, we'll make sure that we don't do it and was willing to, you know, sit down and talk again. And he was, he was hopeful that, no promise, as he told Brendan, supervisor Stumble, hopeful that they'll be able to return some service there.
I guess my only point was, is that we're doing Zoom meetings right now. We've done Zoom meetings for every type of committee I can think of. And my only point is that when AAATA put a full court press on the township to become a constituent member of the organization, because they wanted our taxes to support that organization, that was, at that point in time, it was a real critical moment for the future of AAATA. And they made plenty of time during those time periods when they wanted the township leadership to support that millage. And again, we were, we are, still are, I guess, a constituent member. And I don't think that we should have to always be treated as second class on something that's as vital as bus service. And we're doing, I mean, this bus shelter dollars that's coming from the CDBG is not going to cover the full expenditure for that bus shelter. There's going to be some costs incurred by the township, which I think the board has gladly and supports and set aside in their budget to pay for. But I don't think it's acceptable to say because of COVID, I can't even have a conversation when every conversation we've had the last six months has been kind of similar to what we're having right now. So I just don't think it's respectful to township leadership to not at least explain better when the township is putting dollars over and above the CDBG funding. In fact, the township was willing to go ahead and fund even more money for the bus shelter. It just so happened that we got $22,000 extra from the city of Ypsilanti not being able to utilize those funds for the depot project. So I just think that, you know, maybe it's just because I've been with the organizations for years and when I watch how the, when they come to the township board and want the support and want the tax support, it's a far different behavior than right now, when all we're trying to find out is what is your plan for service in an area like Karen just said? Highly dense, at times very dependent upon public transportation. And, you know, you could tell right now, there's a change in the air with the weather right now. It won't be that much for longer before, we're gonna be sitting in November and December. And I don't know, it just don't seem right to me.
Madam Chair?
Yes, trustee Ross Williams.
Thank you for bringing up the points that you have, Doug, and I did attend that meeting. There was two, two scenarios that were being proposed at that time. One was obviously what we have right here as it relates to the Spooner Cove related bus route. The other one was. The other one was basically cutting services for the south side of Ypsilanti. Now, if I have it correct, services were restored back to the south side of Ypsilanti, at least maybe for a temporary basis. But this hasn't changed. Here's, as I, I made a point during the meeting that the AATA had. Ypsilanti Township overwhelmingly supported the millage that AATA needed. One of the promises of that millage was increased bus, bus services. Obviously, here, also basically to the library, also basically into other areas of the township that hadn't had bus services, period. Like with the Flex, Flex Ride. Now, obviously, COVID has affected a lot of things, understandably. But essential bus services are still going on in various areas throughout the township and also throughout the AATA service area. I just don't understand, and I have yet to understand, why this particular bus route would not be essential service, at least a couple of times a day, to get people to and from their jobs, to get people to and from grocery shopping, to ensure that people are not walking down a road with no sidewalks in the middle of winter. I really would like to have Mr. Carpenter explain that to the entire board, honestly. Because winter, like you did say, winter is coming, and there are still no sidewalks. And we have acclaimed apartments over in that area, Spooner Cove, not everyone that lives there may have a car. And, and it's just, it's, it's just not, it's not very, it's not very professional in order to not answer back our director, residential services director, for his questions, period. So, I mean, hopefully, there could be some way to make or invite Matt Carpenter to a future meeting, I know we have a couple coming up, where he can actually explain his, his ideas in regards to how it is and when it is, that this central services, well, central service will be added back to the Spooner Cove area, which is, we're still paying for, is township tax residents, township residents and our taxes for the AATA, period. So, thank you.
Supervisor Stumbo? Yes, clerk Row?
Yeah, trustee Monica Ross Williams just reminded me, it's like, and I didn't make that pitch to him in the email, but when I think about it, it's like, you just didn't cut off service to this area. It's the only way for anybody from the city of Ypsilanti or anywhere else in the township to get to the library or to the court. It's like, didn't you take that into consideration, that people have to, you know? Normally, a lot of people who go to court don't have transportation. They've had their cars taken away from them or lost their license and stuff. So, I, and I did not raise that issue. So, I think that what Monica Ross Williams has raised, whether it's to board me or whether Supervisor Stumbo asked to have a meeting with them, just to, let's, let's, let's visit it again and make those issues, those our concerns known.
And I would like to know, like trustee Joe Rowe asked, was the ridership, I want to know how many riders are using the Flex Ride? I want to, we may see more people using the Flex Ride as a better service right now. I'm not sure, I'm not saying it is to anybody, but I would like to know, because the Flex Ride was just, you know, heading south from here in River Drive, and now it's going all the way over to Rossville and all the way up to Grove Road. And I'd like to get, you know, we need information. And it is, like, people weren't riding the bus because of COVID. So, I can understand that, but, and there are limited the number of people, but I don't understand exactly why this route was chosen or other routes were, you know, that's the information that we need based on ridership. In order to put this type of bus shelter up, because clerk Row was correct, we tried to put more bus shelters on, in other areas in the township, and AATA would not allow us. They said, you have to have so many ridership in order to put up a bus shelter. Like, that was their rule. And so, for them to change the rules now, I'm hoping, you know, I think they're gonna go back to it, you guys, but I, I don't know, you're right. I guess I need more than a hope and a prayer and just get some more information. You know, even on their website, it's a temporary change, so we need to know, what does that mean exactly? You know? And as far as court, court is all Zoom now.
I know the library, as you can pick up.
Library is closed.
Right. So, you can pick up, but you can order books and pick them up there. But the problem is, like, people can come so far, well, I guess they can come to the city of Ypsilanti, but they can't get, the thing is, we have a gap there, because they can't get, you can only get Flex out here. So, so what do they do, you know? If you're on Foley Street and you want to get to the library to pick up the books that you ordered, but anyways, bigger than just the south side little, this district that does a loop around to the groceries.
Madam Chair?
Yes, trustee Row?
I was also just, the last, like, correspondence that I had with Matt Carpenter, too, he just said, you know, a lot is depending on the state budget, which I totally understand. I mean, I think a lot of us are waiting to see what the state's gonna do and how our funding's gonna be affected from COVID. But I, I would imagine that an entity like AATA has a plan, like a Plan A and a Plan B and a Plan C. And so, I, I just, we need to know what your potential plans are, even if it's not set in stone. Like, in which case do we get to keep our, our route? So, that's just what I would like to, you know, understand from Matt, even though, even if he can't give us a hard and fast answer, like, what are our options moving forward?
Right. And I do know that the state shared revenue issue and the state budget is being adapted right now, and they've worked out to make sure that local governments will not be harmed. And that just came out today. So, we need to see what does it say for, you know, transportation. So, there's so much. Yeah, this is a most unusual time of my life, and I'm still not used to Zoom meetings. You know, I'm not, it's just so different, and it'll probably permanently be different as far as a lot of the services. I was in Aubrey's today, and, you know, the number of restaurants and people that are attending and eating out, I think they are getting a lot of pickup, but still, it's just, the whole world is different right now. I feel like Alice in Wonderland upside down, and hopefully, it writes itself. And we can get some more information from Matt Carpenter and ask him. I want it in writing, I don't want to have a meeting. It's easier for me to have something in writing that we can refer to and we can hold them to, if that's okay.
I agree that writing is always better.
Madam, madam chair?
Yes.
Yeah, it's great to have something in writing. But I also believe that Mr. Carpenter has a obligation with the amount of support that he received when he was trying to convert the AATA to the AATA from residents in Ypsilanti Township to be a little bit more accountable to our township residents, especially as it relates to this route. I understand about Flex Ride, and that's great, but the temporary, okay, what does that mean? Right? So, temporary is, is it six months? Is it three years? What is the criteria with moving it from, might as well say, temporary to bring the ride back status? He would know what that criteria is, I'm sure they have worked out a model. I believe that our residents, especially the ones that have used this bus route, they, they have a right to know. So, writing is great, but I also think he needs to be a little bit more accountable to the residents to help pass the millage that he wanted to have.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and support to approve the agreement, is that right? Our number's item seven?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and I'll follow up with Mr. Carpenter again. Number eight, request to approve an amendment to the memorandum of understanding with the Ann Arbor YMCA.
The board.
Motion Row, support Doe to approve the amendment to YMCA agreement. And Mr. Hofmeister, would you like to give a?
Sure, thank you. As you all remember, in spring of 2020, we signed an MOU with the YMCA of Ann Arbor to partner on some summer camps that ended up taking place a little late, but still took place at our community center. This now is an amendment to that MOU that did terminate at the end of summer. This amendment is allowing us to, again, partner with the YMCA of Ann Arbor to offer learning labs for youth that need a place to go to do their virtual schooling. And so, they will attend this virtual school learning lab at our community center for those students that might have parents that both work and have nowhere to send their children. Ann Arbor YMCA did start that program this year, or I'm sorry, this week, and we are working to upgrade our Wi-Fi in that building in room 105, which is where we're hoping to host that learning lab. So, this is a kind of a very innovative partnership that we're having with the YMCA. I'm proud of the recreation staff who have assisted with putting this program together. And hopefully, we'll be able to start accepting kids at this program at our facility in the coming weeks.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Yeah, madam chair.
Trustee Wilson?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment that I'm, this is a good opportunity to partner with YMCA and helping out the community. It's definitely a need. I will just say that a little disappointed in the cost, because my wife tried to call for our six-year-old. The cost is kind of along the lines of some of the more expensive childcare centers in the area. And I guess we were just expecting YMCA to be a little lower cost, but the opportunity was, you know, at least it's there for people who can afford it. That's all, thanks.
Thank you. They also have scholarships available, Jimmy, for those who need it. So, it's based on?
Income.
Yeah.
I guess I won't get a scholarship.
How many participants are we looking at, Michael?
Yeah, we're looking at two pods of approximately eight to ten. So, we're looking at sixteen to twenty kids per week that will be socially distanced and supervised by an adult camp leader or not a, not a teacher, but an adult supervisor that will help them get on school and log in virtually and stuff like that. So, sixteen to twenty students per week.
Well, that's, that's, it's good. We need more, because I know, I do know a lot of people who are looking for assistance with teaching their kids, because it's, it's a great challenge for parents, grandparents. So, this is great, it's a great beginning. We have a motion, support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We briefly just touched on it in the work session, but the request to approve the agreement of waste management for municipal solid waste recycling and yard waste. Attorney Winters and I are asking that this to be tabled, because we have the draft, and it was included in the packet. Couple misunderstandings based on what the contract says and what the communication is from waste management. As you know, we delivered the, started the delivery of the bins to residents, and the flyer had a lot of information. And the contract, the proposed draft says that we can have a smaller, for people who do not want a large trash bin, that the residents can pay twenty-five dollars for a smaller trash bin. Now, that's in the contract, but Waste Management is telling us verbally on the phone, no. So, we need to make sure, this is a long-term agreement, it's, there's some major changes to it. So, we need to just make sure both entities are on the same page with what the actual contract says. It is different, dramatically different from what we had previously. So, we'd like to table this, and we are gonna call a special meeting for the Habitat discussion that clerk Row asked about as well. So, I would appreciate it.
Madam Chair, did you have a motion to table?
Yes.
I moved to table.
Second.
Motion Doe, support Ross Williams, all in favor? Row call vote? Row? Yes. Doe?
Yes.
Eldridge?
Yes.
Joe Rowe?
Yes.
Ross Williams?
Yes.
And Jimmy Wilson?
Yes.
This item will be tabled, thank you. The next item on the agenda is budget amendment, clerk Row?
This stash here. I have a motion to amend the 2020 budget, this is a budget amendment number eleven, move to increase the general fund by sixty-eight thousand, sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars to ten, 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 if I can get it out of my mouth, ten million two hundred and ninety-five thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And that's for the, the lights and the cameras at Crystal Pond, if we do the resolution next meeting. Move to increase the BSNR two fund by fifty-eight thousand six hundred and ninety-six dollars to two million four hundred and three thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars, and prove the line and changes. And I know that was for the engineer that we just approved to hire, the design principal, whatever they were calling that Loomfeather. Move to increase the hydro fund budget by forty-one thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars, and that was for the mowing and repairs, to five hundred and fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars, and increase the GOS fund by sixteen thousand six hundred and sixty-two, which is for reimbursement for a insurance claim, to seven hundred and eighty-four thousand six hundred and six dollars. I would so move budget number eleven for the 2020 budget.
Motion Row? Support Doe, is that correct?
Yeah.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Support.
Monica Ross Williams.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at eight eighteen.
Thank you. Bye, everybody.
Bye.